Good morning, good morning, good morning. Welcome to your Los Angeles City Council. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. The public is welcome. Mr. Clerk, I believe we have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Bloomfield, Bonnabuys, Canelo, Sadio, Engle, Fuentes, Wezar, Carrasco, Correa, Lamont, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Wesson. Eleven members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
First order— shhh. First order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Labon's moves, Mr. Carrillo's seconds, next.
Mr. President, given council's upcoming recess for the National League of Cities, would you like to send all items today forthwith?
Yes, I would.
Very good, sir. Items one through five are items noticed for a public hearing. The Office of Finance recommends that item one B be received and filed in as much as the tax liability has been paid in full. Further, the Department of Building Safety recommends that item two be received and filed in as much as the subject property was determined to be an owner-occupied, single-family dwelling and thus exempt from lien processing.
You know what, Mr. Clerk? Did we do the resolutions for approvals?
Uh, I do not believe so, sir.
Why don't—you want to do that first?
Absolutely. Commendatory resolutions for approval.
So it's Mr. Buscayeno moves and Mr. Wezar seconds. Now if we could move into the agenda.
Very good, sir. Items one through five, notice for public hearing.
So do we have cards?
Cards on one and three, sir.
Okay, let's hold those items. And, um, members, let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let us open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
And, Mr. President—
Go right ahead.
Pardon me, sir. The ordinance therein will go over to March 17th for a second read unless reconsidered later today with 12.
Okay, let's hope that we will be able to do that. So let's—let's continue.
Very good, sir. Items six through 18 are items for which public hearings have been held. Committee reports for items 13 through 16 and 18 have been circulated for council's consideration.
Okay, Mr. Fuentes.
Yeah, item 12 special, please.
Item 12 special for Mr. Fuentes. Let's—Mr. Labon's?
Item 17, I'd like to continue to March 18th. It's a parcel of land that I'd like to add to Griffith Park, but continue—I want to do a little more community outreach.
Thank you, Mr. Labon's. We'll continue that item. Mr. Parks, did you want something?
Yes, I'd like to—if staff could hold number six, uh, so I could talk to staff about the guidelines.
Okay, let's hold number six. Let's, uh, vote on the remaining items. Let's, uh, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That brings us where, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, items 19 through 40 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before us. Mr. Labon's?
Special.
Mr. Labon's calls 29 special. Mr. Fuentes?
Special.
Twenty-eight for Mr. Sedio. Mr. Parks?
Could have number 33 and number 40 special, and if I can get 40 out of order, because we have a family member here.
Okay, let's do 33. Let's hold 33 and 40. Cards?
Yes, sir. Cards on 19, 23, 24, 25, 27, 28, 32, 34, 36, and 40.
And please wait.
We'll hold those. Let's, uh, vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. What—what did you say?
She's still clicking.
Okay, she's still clicking. We will slow down so she can click.
She's good, sir.
Okay, so let's, uh—
Eleven ayes.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
I'd do eleven ayes.
Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Thank you. Next section?
Mr. President, that brings council to items 41 through 43. They're items scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold them on the desk?
What I'll do—why don't we hold them, and I'll let Mr. Correa get situated and chat with him about, uh, those items. So that brings us where?
Mr. President, on the continuation agenda, item 44 is an item for which a public hearing has not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, uh, that item is now before us. Do we have cards?
No, sir.
Okay, let's—
Item—
Ah!
Item 44 special.
Yeah, no, okay, I remember that now. So we'll hold 44. That's from yesterday. In fact, why don't we put out a call to make sure we have the proper department people here so that we'll be able to take that item up? So that brings us where, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, that brings council to presentations.
Mr. Fuentes, are you ready? Why don't we turn the floor over? If we could have some quiet, please.
Good morning, colleagues. It's a great honor for me to present to you today the Students Run Los Angeles. Give these young people a big round of applause, please. As you notice, Mr. President, they ran to the podium here. They also ran to City Hall this morning. They did a three-mile run from their high school, and they're here today so that we can honor Students Run Los Angeles, an organization serving thousands of youth through the City Hall of Los Angeles, impacted youth, youth that are facing a lot of challenges. And this organization helps them tackle those challenges by staying fit, building character, and running. The, uh, the reason that they're here is that last month, we had the honor of officially starting the 20th Annual Friendship Run at Hanson Dam. And that run is one that brought together more than 3,000 students from across the greater Los Angeles area for their final and toughest exercise run before the Los Angeles Marathon. It's an 18-mile run, and many people tell us because of the slopes and elevations, it is the absolute toughest. And you all know that running marathons takes a lot. It takes a lot of endurance, a lot more than I'm accustomed to. I run every other day, three miles, Mr. President, but not like these young people. The mission of SRLA, the reason that they're here, is because they help challenge these young people. They make sure that they're on the right path, and they do it by working with our great teachers throughout the LAUSD area and other places. The group has grown from what it was to 450 teachers, and as I mentioned, 3,000 students, over 180 schools and community programs throughout Los Angeles. Since 1989, more than 54,000 students have been served by this organization. And here's a couple of very important statistics. Ninety percent of the students who start the marathon finish it. Ninety-five percent of the seniors who run the marathon graduate from high school, and over 90 percent of these students have plans to attend college. Give them a big round of applause for that. By providing teacher mentors, reinforcing responsibility and goal-setting, students are given a life-changing experience. This organization provides that opportunity for all students across the spectrum that is Los Angeles. We've been very committed in working with organizations like this, and I wanted them to be here today to celebrate their Friendship Run, the 20th anniversary of it. And today, I'm joined by Executive Director Marcia Charney, Director of Operations Ronnie Mandel, and Board Member Veronica Perez, as well as one of their fantastic volunteers, Christina Pejak. I'd like to congratulate them and ask Marcia to say a few words.
Councilmember Fuentes and all councilmembers, thank you for inviting Students Run L.A. here today to celebrate our recent 18-mile run at Hanson Dam. It is the defining run for the 3,000 students who will enter the ASICS L.A. Marathon in less than two weeks. In our 26th season, we have served over 57,000 students, and all of them are in your districts who participate in this program. And the stories of success are endless. And we have received wonderful support from this council over our 26 years, and for that, I thank you very much. I would like to introduce to you today one of our original Students Run L.A. students who finished the marathon about over 20 years ago, went on to college, and, uh, and now has returned and has been teaching at the Downtown Business Magnet. And I would like Lulu Rojas to say a few words to her—to you. I would also like to thank, um, our Hagera Quave, our principal from the Downtown Value Magnet, who did jog over with the students who are behind me. And all of these students will be entering the L.A. Marathon a week from Sunday. So now, I would like to invite Lulu to say a few words, and thank you again very much.
Good morning. Didn't anticipate speaking in front of all of you, but I want to thank you this morning for having us here at our program. I graduated in 1989, and I went to Roosevelt High School. At that time, the program wasn't still yet, but I was tutoring with Harry Shabason at Boyle Heights Continuation School, and helping me get extra credits, you know, I joined the program, and we worked and disciplined to get me there and graduate. I've now been teaching for 15 years plus and still been in the program, and serving back in our community where I grew up, still with the same people that, um, started this program, very thankful. And this program really has—has instilled so much of the discipline and character building that we don't get from classrooms. Students don't get that from reading books. Students get that from the experience of going out or knowing what hard work really is, the support that the leaders give, and the sponsors, and all of you who are willing to bring us and recognize the students who continue to come through this program. It's just amazing. And all the—the, um, impact that the program has instilled, it doesn't end when we cross the finish line. It's just starting, because with that, they build confidence and encouragement and discipline to tackle on the life challenges that we face, even as adults. It doesn't end by getting a medal. It ends with accomplishing the next goal. High school is the first one for most of us, and the students here next to me, and the one—all the 3,000 in the district, and all of the district that are in the program. Then comes college, and life. Life itself is a huge challenge. So with that, that all that instilled in the program is just amazing and accomplishment that—it encourages you to take on more, more than just running, more than just college, more than just, um, paying off your mortgage for most of us. All of those things are just amazing, and we are thankful for you to have us here. We know what it is to hit a wall. Most of us have done there, have been there before. If you ran a long marathon, 26.2, you're at the 18-mile mark, and you hit the wall, and what do you do? You get up and you keep going. That's what we are here for, to show students and continue on. And it's not just for them, it's for all of us, to bring back and, um, hopefully continue to receive the support that all of you are giving us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You're a Rough Rider from Roosevelt?
Yes.
All right, good job. And a Tiger from San Fernando?
Class of 89 right here.
And Downtown Business, a great job, Mr. Fuentes. These students, it's a legacy to the '84 Olympic Games where we had no marathon, and then the outreach, and, uh, John Leighton, who was such a great, and Al Cortez, who's such a great person beyond the belt, and you, Mr. Fuentes, and Hanson Dam and all the schools. Please, continue.
Mr. Labon's, thank you for that. I just wanted to, again, acknowledge the tremendous work that this organization is doing with the youth, our leaders. As you heard, it's about character, it's about dedication, it's about commitment to making sure that you're conquering everything that's in front of you, whether it's a marathon or whether it's life. Give these young people a big round of applause. Congratulations, Student Run Los Angeles.
Good job.
Follow me, we're gonna take some photos of you guys, all right?
Sergeant, if you could help the students get back for their great picture. Good job, students. You gonna run back? Make sure they run up to the top of City Hall. It's a beautiful view. You'll see your high school there.
Do you guys want to get your—
You collect your belongings, you'll be exiting on the back for me. Okay?
We have some cards. Mr. Walsh, one card. Item 40. I'm sorry, Mr. Clerk. I was speaking too fast. Item 40. Call item—
Item 40, call special for cards.
One card, Mr. Walsh, John Walsh. John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. I don't have Honda on my shirt. That's why you can't see me. They had Honda on their shirts.
Stay on the item.
You stay on the item. Number 40. This is again an offer for reward. You net—if a black man or a brown man or woman is run over by a car, you're wasting your time with these rewards. I've said it over and over again. I taught in South Central for 25 years at LAUSD. Many of the gang leaders are my former students. Snitches get stitches. Anybody who tells you, uh, who was the hit—who caused the Michael Darrell Atkins hit-and-run, and it was somebody drunk from a liquor license that you granted, or a gangster, what will happen to them? They'll have their throat slit. This is a dangerous city. Get the hell out of it, anybody.
Thank you for being so sensitive to the family that's here, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Parks, you're disrupting the meeting. Mr. Parks?
Thank you very much. I'd ask, uh, Michael Holliness to come up and his family at the podium. And Michael, if you could introduce your family members, and also just make your comments to the public and the cameras so that the public can be supportive of your wish.
Yes, sir. My name is Michael Holliness. This is the mother of Michael Atkins. This is his grandmother. This is his fiancee, and other family members, Nisi, Nesis, and—and all of us here that are representing this, and Shannon, representing Michael Atkins. And we, on behalf of Michael and—and the loss, sure enough, we know that he was in pursuit of raising his family and living a life of honest-day worker, and he had no intentions to pass as he did. But the circumstance as they are brought a horrible opportunity for—for the family, and this is something that they can't themselves bear the burdens alone. So if there's anybody out there that have any information that can help to solve this issue of—for—for careless loss, for someone to just hit someone and—and go on like it's—it was nothing, no care about it, and then don't have any desire to help. Someone out there may have seen something, heard something, and—and he has three children that are going to now have to live without their dad. And—and—and at the ages of nine, eight, and two years old, it's a sad situation. And so, so right now, he really do deserve better than what happened to him. He didn't make it happen himself. So someone out there, whatever happened in your heart for you to just run and—and not stand by and—and be a man or a woman, is really a coward coward act. So—so on behalf of the family, we're hoping that this person, if you don't come for it, maybe someone knows someone that will. And—if he did this and he's running, well, what else would this person do? So he needs to be off the street. So—so every opportunity that—that can help would be beneficial.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate the family being here. And contrary to the comments that were made before you came up, we honestly believe that these rewards and you bringing attention to this incident will help solve it eventually and assist LAPD. The circumstances of this case is that on February the 10th, at 6:00 a.m., uh, in the morning, unknown, um, driver of a Dodge Ram truck traveling north on Western Avenue attempted to negotiate a left turn to travel west on 78th Place. He collided with a motorcycle traveling south on Western Avenue. The unknown driver in the Dodge Ram failed to remain at the scene to render aid or identify himself as required by law. Later, Michael Durrell Atkins, uh, passed away at the hospital due to his injuries. Uh, the detectives on this case, Officer Hernandez, South Traffic Division detectives at 323-421-2500, is asking for assistance in solving this case, and we're asking today for a $50,000 reward to help bring this case to a conclusion.
Okay, with that said, members, uh, let's, uh, prepare to vote on this item. And again, uh, our hearts go out to each and every one of you, and we want to apologize for what occurred earlier. So let's, uh, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Our pleasure, sir. You know, before, um, before we, uh, go to the next item, if I could get, uh, Mr. Buscayeno and Mr. Bonin, if you would direct our guest to maybe Mr. Englander's area, because I think, uh, that's where it might wind up in the shuffle. But ladies and gentlemen, it's—it's my pleasure to be the first one to present to you the, uh, uh, councilmember-elect of the Eighth Council District, Marquise Dawson, Harris Dawson. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for visiting us today.
Thank you so much. We're very eager to get out and serve. The folks in the Eighth District really responded, uh, and responded in a forceful way that they're ready to start a new chapter in our part of town, and so we're out, ready to get busy to do that. We look forward to connecting with all of you well in advance of July 1st, and, uh, we'll be here, uh, ready to work first thing in the morning.
Can we, uh—is Sharon around? Maybe if you—if they haven't, why don't we have the two of them have a conversation with our CLA? Okay, uh, Mr. Sedio. We want to quickly, uh, take up item 28. I do have a few cards. How would you like for me to proceed?
Who are the cards?
The cards? Okay, is this Jacqueline Mia from Chirla? I think this is Tessie Borden, and Mr. Walsh. Please come forward. Good morning and welcome.
Good morning, council. My name is Jacqueline Mejia. I'm the local policy advocate with Chirla. And on behalf of Chirla, we would like to thank councilmember Sedio for introducing the resolution, and councilmember Price for the support. Um, Los Angeles has demonstrated once again its ability to welcome immigrants and stand by their side during these times, during these challenging times. Uh, this resolution builds upon the thousands of supporters for the president's executive orders. These executive orders would help expand the DACA program and bring the prep—I'm sorry—and bring the parents of citizens and lawful residents out of the shadows through the DACA program. Chirla is in full support of this resolution, and we encourage the passage of it today. Thank you so much.
Hi, could you just state your name?
Good morning. My name is Tessie Borden. I'm Director of Communications for Carrison. I would like to, um, first of all, express our thanks, um, to councilmember Sedio, um, for his bringing up this resolution. We are, um, very much aware of what is going on in, um, the lawsuit brought by the states regarding the DACA DACA programs. We believe that what is happening there is an effort to confuse and to scare the immigrant community that, um, contributes to the strength of this country. And we are very grateful, um, that entities like this have come forward with the will to support, um, the programs that the president has introduced to help this community. Um, so we want to, uh, just express our support and our thanks, um, for making this forum another one in which we could, um, bring forward the strength of the immigrant community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. These MFers in Texas, these racist scumbags in Texas, especially this asshole judge in Texas, is trying to throw a monkey wrench into President Obama. We support every single one undocumented workers in America, and this garbage, this right-wing garbage—you're a little too nice to them. Uh, Mr. O'Farrell is giving head to one of his deputies over here. I'm telling you right now, we hate and despise these right-wingers.
Mr. Walsh, Mr. Walsh, please use words to express this issue and not comment on others. Continue.
Under the, uh, the Act, we can—if I want to call them garbage, I can. You are defending these Texas garbage right-wingers, because you're a right-white ringer yourself, you vomitous piece of crap.
Hi, my name is Antonio Bernabi. I'm the Director of Organizing for Chirla, the Coalition for Humanitarian Rights of Los Angeles. I'm here to support the resolution. This resolution means a lot for the city of Los Angeles. These resolutions in favor of DACA and DACA means a lot for the poor communities of Los Angeles. It is good for the economy of the city. It—it—it means inclusion, dignity, and respect for the poor communities of Los Angeles. So let's vote yes on resolution 28. Thank you very much.
Raul Murillo. Raul, please, hold it down, Raul. You're next.
Thank you so much. My name is Raul Murillo. I represent the Amanda Mexicana. I really want to congratulate councilmember Sedio for putting up this, uh, resolution. We come here in support. We think and we believe that it's really important for the city of L.A. to send a strong message that, um, it's time to recognize, uh, all the work and efforts that the immigrant community has on to this, uh, to make this, uh, country a great country. So, uh, I strongly support this resolution. I urge you to vote in favor of the resolution 28. Thank you.
Thank you. Juan Jose Gutierrez.
Thank you, councilmember Labon. My name is Juan Jose Gutierrez. I am the president of the Vamos Unidos USA Organization and the Full Rights for Immigrants Coalition. I am here to wholeheartedly support this resolution by council—by, uh, councilmember Gilbert Sedio, a friend of the immigrant community and a fighter for this community. Uh, we have to send a strong message that L.A. is not only on the cutting edge of advocating for immigrant rights— for immigrant rights, but also to send a strong message that LA and the state of California is not South Texas, it is not the South of the United States, it does not agree with people who have prejudicial feelings and actually racist feelings against the immigrant community and all working people. And so I am here to wholeheartedly support Councilmember Gilbert Sedillo's resolution, and I urge every single member of this council to vote in favor of it. The community spoke yesterday. We supported Councilmember Jose Weisar in his reelection, and Gloria Molina, who actually acted against the best interest of the immigrant community, went down in defeat. I think that speaks loud and clear that the immigrant community is here speaking for itself, and the immigrant vote is starting to count. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Leti Velas. Leti Velas? Is Leti Velas here? Could you state it, Mr. Sedillo? Because I can't read it. Could you state the name?
Leticia Velas.
Hi, my name is Leticia Velas. First of all, I want to thank Councilmember Gilbert Sedillo and the Mayor Eric Garcetti for this opportunity. I just want to say this quickly. I am the eldest of three. My mom's a single mother. She's always worked so hard, two jobs at a time, slept probably three to four hours at a time, and just to give us a better life. And I have worked so hard, and I keep telling people, you get to this point where it's like, what are you going to do now? And you get to DAPA and DACA, and it's so amazing that it's such a great opportunity that then suddenly it's cut off and your dreams are gone. And, you know, I keep telling people, it's really difficult to deal with that. But I just want to say that it would be an amazing opportunity if you gave us the opportunity to do this, because we are hardworking, and we would go places, we would work hard. We just want to come out of the shadows and do something. Thank you.
Thank you, Leticia. Thank you very much. No other cards?
Members, just some perspective here. On November 20th of last year, the President initiated, after years of frustration, of refusal, refusal, on behalf of Republicans in Congress to address this action, the President took forward the initiative, as he had done in the past, and as all Presidents have done in the past, he issued an executive order. And in doing so, he created a program called DAPA, Deferred Action Parenthood Arrival, and an expansion of DACA, an existing program, Deferred Action for Childhood Arrivals. He did this within his power, his authority, and his mandate, and those efforts were frustrated when a judge in Texas, Judge Hanen, stayed the action of the President. Since that time, the mayor, with his incredible leadership, has brought together 33 other mayors, and working with the Justice Department, has filed an amicus brief, asking for that order to be set aside so that the program can go forward. This city of immigrants, the second-largest city of the nation, but the most immigrant and diverse city of the nation, stands to benefit the most from the DACA and the DAPA program. And so I stand here, as I have in many instances, in front of many of you, and ask you to join me to take the actions that are necessary, that provide a legal pathway for immigrants to participate in the mainstream of our society. And we know, through the experience of the Driver's License Program, which is operating at one of the most incredibly successful programs the state has ever initiated, over 100,000 new licenses, over half a million new applicants in a mere seven weeks, we know that that success, coupled with the success that we saw with the California Dream Act, that immigrants stand ready, willing, and able to move forward and move into the mainstream of society, given an opportunity to live life here in a manner that's legal, they will. And so the time has come, and now is the time to make true this promise of democracy. Now is the time to provide this opportunity. Now is the time for us to recognize that this is a nation of immigrants, that that is our history, that is our current reality, but more important, that the future of this city, this state, this nation relies on the vitality of this immigrant community that comes here sharing the same hopes and aspirations that all who have come here share. And that is a hope to live here with dignity and respect, and that is a hope to provide a better life, not just for themselves, but the future of their family, their community, and this great nation. I ask for an eye vote.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sedillo, for those fine words. There's no speakers on the queue. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes?
Thank you. Fourth with on that matter. Thank you. I know, but I'd like to say... Okay, next item of business at this time. All the 12-vote items, we have 12 members here. Mr.?
Those ordinances that need to be reconsidered, sir, for 12 members are Items 4, 7 through 10, and 20 through 22. That's a two-vote item, first reconsider and then on the matter.
Let's vote for reconsideration. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Okay, now it's for consideration, on our consideration of any of those items? All of them? All right, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes?
Thirteen ayes, so ordered. Mr. Clerk, I'd like to take up Item Number 12. We do have guests here.
That's Item Number 12, called Special by Councilmember Fuentes.
Good, and I want to call on cards first, Mr. Fuentes. Should I do the... All right, don't have to take the cards. I got it. Let me hold those cards, Alan. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, Mr. Fuentes?
Thank you, Mr. Lavange. Colleagues, I wanted to bring to your attention Item Number 12. This is an instruction to staff to begin the development of an ordinance that would begin to make it so that we treat every capital project in the city of Los Angeles where we touch soil, every project, we would make it so that we begin to consider water in its absolute wholeness. The reason that this is important, colleagues, is because we need to begin to think about streets as our primary conveyance system for water. Why is that? Because we have to treat pollutants. We're mandated, in fact, by federal clean water legislation to do so. Why do we have to do that? Because we also have to make sure that we increase our water supply to make sure that Los Angeles is water secure. And the reason we need to do it is that the city of Los Angeles has already asked multifamily dwellings to design in a way that they have low impact and they retain and capture as much runoff as possible. Now it's the city of Los Angeles' turn to apply those same principles, those best management practices in low-impact design, to the rest of the public space in the city of Los Angeles. We've got to do it, we're mandated to do it, and we need to do it in order to ensure a more resilient city of Los Angeles. This is an exciting thing for me to talk about, because it also provides an opportunity for us to work with great partners and stewards, not only to the environment, but to the notion of making sure that we're building a more resilient Los Angeles. And I wanted to publicly thank a couple of people who have helped to this end. In particular, and of distinction, I want to congratulate and thank Public Works Commissioner Barbara Romero, who has been a stalwart advocate for these types of approaches, but has been very instrumental in making sure that we do it now with this ordinance. With that, my good friend, a good friend to all of us, Andy Lipkis from Tree People is here today, who has been making this his work for a long time, but it's one that we need to realize in public policy more so, and this does it today. Los Angeles Waterkeeper Liz Croson, the American Institute of Architects, Will Wright and Nicole Cannon, Heal the Bay, The River Project, NRDC, the LA River Revitalization Corporation, Green LA Coalition, and the Council for Watershed Health, amongst the many people who have helped us make this a reality. The instruction, colleagues, is to draft the ordinance. Now the fun and exciting work begins, where we begin to work with these partners in a technical capacity to make sure that we get the policy right. But I wanted to also acknowledge the fact that city staff is coming together in a tremendous kind of way. Engineering, sanitation, DWP, street services, everywhere and in between, the idea now is to put that policy filter, so when we have a capital expenditure, we make it so that it maximizes the opportunity, completes the investment of our public space, which ultimately reduces costs to the ratepayer as well as the taxpayer. So a special thank you to them. And lastly, I want to acknowledge my two colleagues who helped me get this idea off the ground. Mr. Englander and Mr. Buscaino, with their Save Our Streets Los Angeles conversation, really endeavored to make it so that we had a more sustainable city of Los Angeles as it relates to streets. I want to make sure that we make it as smart as possible so that the investment is maximized, and that's how this idea was born. I want to thank Mr. Buscaino for his chairmanship and all of the good work that he's doing, and colleagues, the hard work begins, stay tuned, we are going to get it right so that we maximize everything that we can in the public space, so that we're thinking of water in the whole sense, the whole cycle, and maximizing every single molecule. Thank you very much, and I ask for an eye vote.
Mr. Fuentes, thank you for your great leadership, but Mr. Buscaino, Where All the Water Goes wants to say a few words for the 15.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Felipe Fuentes, for your leadership and your very thoughtful proposal that you laid out in your motion. Really pleased to work together with your committee, with E2 Committee, and great discussion, a great committee meeting that we had. Colleagues, as you know, with Mitch Englander and I led this effort with Save Our Streets LA. That was the first time I actually heard the term "green street." And we were approached by a number of organizations who urged us to use the opportunity to reconstruct our streets in a way that achieves multiple benefits. That means recognizing that our streets cover 13% of the total land in Los Angeles and serves as our primary stormwater collection device. In an era where we are experiencing a historic drought, we need to rethink the way we deal with stormwater, sending thousands of gallons of fresh water out the ocean, and at the same time, we import thousands of gallons of water through our aqueducts makes no sense. Today, we move forward on this policy before you that recognizes that reality, that reality in reality, that will require street reconstruction projects to include stormwater best management practices. This includes bioswells, permeable pavement, dry wells, and that help capture, filter, and retain stormwater. So this policy recognizes that one-size-fits-all requirements will not work in the city of Los Angeles with such diverse geography. Different stormwater management tools will be used in different areas, depending on factors such as water quality improvement potential, stormwater infiltration feasibility, drainage, the drainage capacity and flood mitigation. We ask for your eye vote, and it's great to work with you, Mr. Fuentes, in moving this forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bonin?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I rise really just to commend Mr. Fuentes on this motion and Mr. Buscaino for his work on it. As I posted on Facebook last week when this was in committee, I think this is the single best legislative proposal I've seen since I've taken office. It is, it's thorough, it's smart, it's forward-looking, it serves both a policy objective and a dire constituent need. I'm entirely enthusiastic about this. I look forward to when we can have a prioritization of green streets and also complete streets. And I think this is an amazing piece of work, and just huge kudos for what you've done. Thank you.
Mr. O'Farrell, the River Committee, in open space and parks.
Thank you. I also want to echo the compliments to you, Felipe, for your leadership on this, and just the fact that you have the wherewithal, the knowledge, and the leadership to build upon the incredible best practices that the city has seen from Andy Lipkis in greening our schoolyards and lifting the blacktop up, and Sharom Karagani of sanitation, and all the great work that has gone on over the past several years. This is such a, it's really so satisfying to see you just take the reins and the leadership to make these things happen, and I think that there is a convergence of so many good things right now, looking for ways to fund these projects in specific zones where we're trying to identify a permanent revenue stream. I think we're on our way to a much more sustainable future, and your leadership really helps cement that, even though we hate the word "cement," for all of us. So go, Los Angeles, go, sustainable LA, and congratulations.
Very good, Mr. O'Farrell. Thank you very much. No other speakers on the queue? Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes?
Fourteen ayes. Go ahead, good job, sanitation, all the community groups. Thank you very much. Mr. Buscaino, I'm going to go next on Item 29.
Colleagues, this item before you, it's a please and honor to co-present with Mr. Lavange in the naming of the intersection of Rowena Avenue and West Silver Lake Drive as Joseph Anthony Gatto Memorial Square. As we all know, over a year ago, we lost a hero in the art education community, a hero who fought for giving kids across the school district and across Southern California an opportunity to express themselves through art. And Mr. Gatto died tragically, an incident at his home, and continuing to work with the police department, asking folks to come forward with any information leading to the arrest of the individual who murdered Mr. Gatto. His murder shocked the city of Los Angeles, even more so having a colleague in the state legislator, Assemblymember Mike Gatto, and his daughter, Mariana Gatto, who has joined us today for this item. Mariana's been in the forefront of reexamining, reimagining the Italian Hall, and this is a true loss, but a great way, a huge gesture to ensure that Mr. Gatto's memory is alive here in the city of Los Angeles with the naming of this square. And I'll never forget, in his funeral service, how Mr. Gatto loved hummingbirds, and every single time I see a hummingbird come through my presence, I think of Mr. Gatto. So with that, if I may, can point of privilege if I can have Mariana Gatto say a few words?
Good morning, and congratulations to all of the re-elected members of the City Council. I stand in front of you today wishing my father was here to accept this honor as he had been in 2003, when you first honored him for his 47 years of teaching. Then I realized that he is here, and as a pacifist and educator, he would ask all of us to work together to instill in our communities a sense of appreciation for the sanctity of human life. However we do that, partnering with community organizations, supporting those who share that mission, so that there are fewer empty seats at our dinner tables, so that fewer lives are so senselessly and tragically stolen from us. I just would like to close by thanking Councilmembers Lavange and Buscaino, as well as Councilmember O'Farrell, for honoring my father in this way in the community where we lived for over 40 years. So thank you very much, and peace and love to all of you.
Thank you very much, Mariana. There's no other speakers on the queue, Mariana. I just wanted to rise, your dad was a great father, was a great artist and a great teacher, and this is an important intersection in our neighborhood. Mr. O'Farrell, I thank you for all your work, and thank you for your father's great love. No other speakers on the queue? Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes?
Fourth with on that matter is all the matters that go in fourth with. Next item, Mr. Clerk, we could take up number one.
That's Item One, called Special for Cards.
John Walsh? John Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or J. Walsh Confidential, the hack is off my website, and tweeting at Hollywood Dems. This is number one. And approve the hearing protest Office of Finance, approval to record liens against taxpayers for unpaid taxes. If you feel you're, this is the first one here, is a lien for $11,000. Auto Spa Connection. And apparently, they've decided not to protest it because if you get up here and protest it, they automatically either cancel it or cut it in half. But then again, almost all the liens are against blacks and Hispanics. If you're a white West Side Jew, and I'm a Jew, you're not going to get a lien. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Wayne from Encino.
The defeat of Gloria Molina is complete. Okay. So, CD5, cancel these liens. Look at these good businesses. Auto Spa Connection. The man cleans cars. He saves water. Cancel his lien, then he can employ a couple of new people after they get their dock of work permits. And then we have the Honorable Bob M. Cohen and Associates Law Corporation. Now, there would be a good campaign donor. Cancel the lien for the $19,304. In exchange, give the reelection committee to Paul Coretts half of it. That would be a good thing. So please, cancel these liens. They're against Jews. Please, no more of these liens. One minute.
Samuel Clemens Herman.
Samuel Clemens is alive and back at City Hall to remind the diapers that we can no longer satisfy and realize every lien is a process, an illegal challenge you put against your constituents or the taxpayers. So as you see and heard, Auto Spa Connection for $11,000, Mr. Paul Coretts. And regards to Bob M. Cohen and Associate Law Corporation, $19,000 and change, Mr. Paul Coretts. I'm pretty sure you will waive the majority of these charges because you, like every other politician, love to play the game of be paid, be played, and bribe to be played, right? So I'm down to six seconds, and I'm going to yield my time back to you, Mr. Speaker, for one minute.
No other speakers on the queue?
And, Mr. President, again, there is a recommendation from the Department to receive and file 1B inasmuch as the tax liability has been paid in full.
Good. So, that being said, let's vote on it. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Fourteen ayes. Next item.
That brings us to item number three, called Special for Cards.
Eric Previn.
Good morning, Council President Labange. It is Eric Previn, no longer a candidate for the CD2 race. I'd like to congratulate Mr. Kaurian on a victory. I did get 25% of the vote, but I'll speak on the item, which today is an item to issue some bonds, $16.4 million worth of bonds, for a group that I'm actually very familiar with called the AIDS Healthcare Foundation. This, as we all know, is Michael Weinstein's group, who, along with his team, sued the city and the county in order to get some sort of health commission going, which we are on the, it's underway at the moment. What concerns me about this item is this is a lot of money, bond money, that is going to be earmarked for the restoration, renovation, kind of fixing up of AIDS Healthcare Foundation facilities, which is great. I think that that sounds like a good area. But circling back a couple of weeks, this is the very same group that also came up with $100,000 to fund the Brown Act component that Mr. Kaurian couldn't find for months, any money to provide to the public. But now we're going to find that money, and we're looking at, is it too conflict-y for them to be underwriting that, or are there issues there? And so the question really is, are there issues there? And I, you know, though I tend to line up with AIDS Healthcare Foundation regularly, certainly Mr. Weinstein and Mr. Yaroslavsky had lots of nice discussions that the public was amused by. But in this case, I would just ask that maybe this item too needs to be studied carefully by someone other than Mr. O'Connell, obviously, who has his plate full, but a city attorney who would be appropriately trained on these kinds of issues where ethical walls and conflict of interest, that has taken the interest of many of the council members, including Mr. Coretts, yesterday with that spectacular presentation at item 19. And, Mr. Dion, that is not on.
He is not on topic.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Previn. Your time is completed. No other cards on this? Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Next item, Mr. Clerk.
That brings us to item number three, called Special for, excuse me, item number six, called Special for Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Park.
Thank you very much. Could I have staff to come up for just a second, please?
Staff at the center table, please.
I would just like you to relate to the public some of the conversation we had earlier. Is that in the ordinance, it specifically directs people to use the residential parkway landscaping guidelines as a source of knowing how to plant in their parkway. And I found it very difficult myself finding the guidelines. We just located, you brought me a copy. Can you let the public know how the guidelines correlate with the ordinance and where they could locate it? And I think it's an important point that you brought up. Wherever you get a permit for a tree, you can get the guidelines. But on item B of the ordinance, many of the things, such as edible plants, you don't need a permit. So the key is, how does a person know how to plant, where to plant, and particularly in light of ADA and a variety of other things that could be harmful, that a person could put themselves in jeopardy? So if you can explain that to them.
Good morning. Lance Uishy with the Bureau of Street Services. To answer the first question about where one can find the guidelines, the guidelines are currently available on the Bureau of Street Services website under the Engineering Division webpage. Also, my understanding is that the Department of Water and Power also has the guidelines on their website because of their turf rebate program, so that people may be educated about that if they choose to modify their parkways for that program. Regarding the maintenance requirements, we are going to have to modify the guidelines. That's one of the things that is forthcoming as a result of this ordinance change, especially as it relates to edibles, because edibles have a special maintenance considerations, mainly that they're annual plants, so they have to be replaced on a regular basis. They're not like preneos that are out there all the time. We're also going to reiterate a lot of things like height restrictions, access through parkways so that people can get from the street to the sidewalk area if they have to. Those are all revisions that will be pending and are under discussion right now.
Okay. And then how will we know when the guidelines are updated?
So when the guidelines are updated, what we'll do is, we need to go before the Board of Public Works to get them adopted officially. We will ask that the guidelines also get forwarded to council for discussion at that time.
Okay. I would just like to give you three reports under three different CF numbers that all talk about parkways. I'll give you the report. Talk about parkways, and they go all the way back to 2007. And there's some very interesting information about ADA. And then there's also some, when we had this before council before, at least a couple of council members are quoted in the report as to their concern about litigation and liability. And one report also goes into some depth about ADA. So I'm going to give you those and ask if you review those and reference them if they're appropriate when you update the guideline.
Thank you.
I'm going to do a friendly amendment to support Mr. Parks on that. ADA, very concerning. Thank you. And no other speakers on the queue?
Nope, right here.
So, that's, that's open the roll. Bob.
Just had a question about these edible plants. What about the drought-resistant plants?
So drought-resistant plants are included within guidelines. They're supported, they are actually recommended, and so we're trying to put that in there. Of course, edibles are not necessarily always drought-tolerant, so we have to make allowances for that.
But at the end of the day, when this is said and done, for drought-resistant plants in the parkway, the guidelines will be there, and it'll be easy for people to do that.
That's what the guidelines are actually trying to endorse and support, yes.
Great. Thank you.
And you're going to look for safety, too, in poking plants, you know? They got them on Russell Avenue in their town. I'll walk you down there. Okay. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Fourteen ayes. Thank you very much. Next item.
That brings us to item 19, called Special for Cards.
Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at J. Walsh Confidential, the block is off 19. This is street lighting. San Fernando Post Division Number One Street Lighting. The number one, correlate the amount of crime according to street lighting. The more lights, the less crime. When I, you know, teach, 25 years teaching in South Central, occasionally I go home late, you know, five or six, when it starts getting dark. South Central and the black areas are dark. They don't have the straight streetlights, because you don't have white skin like me, and you're not a Jew like me, and your people don't stand up for you, and you have to get in the dark because you're not allowed. Second-class citizens, blacks aren't second-class citizens anymore. You're third-class citizens. HollywoodHighlands.org, after the Mexicans.
No other cards, Mr. Speaker? Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Next item.
Item 23, called Special for Cards.
Sean Murphy.
Yes, item 23, I support. It's a good item for the city.
No other speakers? Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Next item, Mr. Clerk.
24, called Special for Cards.
Sean Murphy.
Need me to sit a little closer? Item 24, I support.
No speakers on the queue? Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Fourteen ayes. Next item?
Item 25.
Mr. Walsh? Pass. No speakers on the queue? Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Next item?
Item 27, called Special for Cards.
Sean Murphy.
Yes, item 27. This is another item I support. It's good, be good for the city. That's it.
Wayne from Encino.
Sewers are good things. They flush things down the toilet. But let's get to the bottom here. The city engineer reports that there's a $3,317 fee for processing this report? The hell's that? Give that money back, because that is incorporated in the project's Quimby fees. You don't charge additional fees for the report. You're just stealing the guy's money. He's going to give you the dedication that land is worth. You can't value land. It's priceless. He's giving the dedication. Why the hell is he paying to give something free to the city? Please amend this motion to delete the requirement of the $3,317 illegal fee and give it back to the spine dedicator. I support it. Thank you.
Samuel Herman.
Mr. Speaker, I pass. I agree with the former.
Thomas Dumery, is that correct? Thomas?
Yeah, that's close enough. Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Thomas Dumery. I'm representing the owner of 2945 Glendower. We're proposing to voluntarily dedicate a new sanitary sewer easement on our property and relocating the existing sewer line into the new easement. The existing location has a negative impact on the new single-family home we're proposing. Per our discussions with the Bureau of Engineering and our civil engineers on the team, relocation of the line will be 100% functional and have no negative impacts. Thank you for considering our request, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Thomas. Good job. Okay. No speakers on the queue? Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Next item.
That brings us to item 32, called Special for Cards.
John Walsh. Mr. Herman.
I wear the mask of a person who's been a victim of the Armenian genocide. Jamina Meniscide. Because I and Mr. Kaurian have disagreed that he did not support the Armenian people and their crisis of genocides, the same way he does not represent the public's interests politically correct when it comes to homelessness and genocide. They have a connection. So in memory of all those Armenians, we, the American people, brought us together as my brothers, not Kaurian, Paul. We, the American people. Under one minute, Mr. Paul Kaurian.
Mr. Previn.
Yes, good morning, Council President Wesson. It's good to see you back in the room, and Mr. Labange and all. This item is a very touching, actually, proposal to put 100 pomegranate trees on the city's property to commemorate the 100th anniversary of the Armenian genocide, and I support it. And I wanted to just say, because I think there is some confusion about what this issue is and why people care so much about it, and in two sentences or less, you know, I'm a Jew, and the Germans, there was a Holocaust, and then Germany accepted responsibility in some way, and there are still issues with antisemitism in the world, and we remain concerned, but that happened. And in the case of the Armenians, there was a genocide, and for various reasons, the perpetrators of that genocide did not own up to it or make it, you know, right in any way. And consequently, there have been confusing pieces, like the federal government, our government, the greatest government, failed to really recognize it. So I appreciate what Mr. Kaurian is doing here by, you know, finding ways to acknowledge this important piece of history that has been under-reported and under, sort of, anyway. But so, and I also look forward to, in the future, finding ways for the community that is so active, you know, in supporting Mr. Kaurian, but also, many of you, to step up also and find a way to help fundraise for this issue, which I know is ongoing regularly, because, of course, there are challenges, and though we have done a lot, and will continue to do a lot, you know, the city, there is a line, and, you know, I have mixed feelings, but I'm supportive, of course, of the important part of this, which is that we have to acknowledge that piece of history. And thank you, Mr. Kaurian, for doing that.
Okay. No other speakers on the queue? Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Next item.
Item 33, called Special for Cards.
Pedro Baca, is that correct?
Pedro Baez.
Baez. I apologize. Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning, council, and also, good morning to, and congratulations to all who were re-elected, and, Mr. President, congratulations on your reelection. I know we're gonna be having a wonderful city as we go forth. March 7th, fifty years ago, was a very important day in American history. It was the day that Selma became a very important part of this country, and was put on the map because of a demonstration that took place at the Edmund Pettus Bridge in Selma, Alabama. And today, I am asking the council to please back the resolution being put forth by Councilman Parks, and being seconded by my own Councilman Joe Buscaino, to recognize March 7, 2015, as Selma Recognition Day in the city of Los Angeles. It is important that we recognize this event as a very important part of American history, the right to vote, and it's unfortunate that yesterday, only eight percent came out of those people eligible to vote, and 92% decided to take a powder on this and not even participate. And we think that is an insult to the people who gave their lives in this particular act so that all of us could vote freely. And so, city council, I ask that you all pass this resolution, and do so. Thank you again. Pedro Baez.
Thank you. No other speakers on the queue, Mr. Parks?
Thank you very much. Colleagues, this is an era of fifty-year anniversaries. We recently had a fifty-year anniversary in addressing the passage of the Civil Rights Act of 1964. We also had a motion that was approved by the council to commemorate the Watts riot that's approaching fifty years in August of this year. But this is a unique situation in that many people, I believe over time, have failed to realize the significance of the march in Selma, and that it actually is credited with moving the Congress to vote on the Voter Rights Act. And the Voter Rights Act, as was mentioned earlier, is something in which is our most basic right in our community. Just a little background, there was a protest of 600 civil rights activists that began to march to protest because of voter right registration practices and the shooting death of Jimmy Lee Jackson during voter registration dive. In that event, the marches progressed only six blocks before, from the Brown Chapel AME Church to the Edmund Pettus Bridge, where they were tear-gassed and beaten. On March the 9th, the Reverend Martin Luther King led a symbolic march of 2,000 people over the bridge, all kneeling there to pray, and on March 21st, with the protection of the Alabama National Guard, more than 3,000 people set out from Selma, again led by Reverend King, marching an average of 12 miles per day on Route 80. They often slept in the fields at night. By the time the group reached Montgomery on the 25th of March, the group grew to 25,000. That's where Reverend King gave one of his most remembered speeches. Five months after that third march, in the historic three-week period, Congress passed the Voter Rights Act of '65, recognizing the rights of all United States citizens to fully participate in the electoral process. This is significant in the fact that we also refer to that particular event as Bloody Sunday, and many people were beaten because of their peaceful march across the bridge. Recently, in the city of LA, in commemorating the 50th anniversary of the passage of the Civil Rights Act, we had a amending motion by two of my colleagues that asked that on an annual basis, to commemorate the Civil Rights Act, that our city family come forward and give a state of the civil rights in Los Angeles, so that we will continue to remember the significance of this. And I ask today that we pass this resolution in honor of the 50th year anniversary of the Voter Rights Act and the Selma march. And one of the things also from our community, and this is something that we are certainly supportive of, but Mr. Afari Hutchison, one of our leading civil rights leaders, has written a book on this era of 50-year anniversary that's named "The King to Obama: Witness to a Turbulent History." And for those interested, it's a very well-documented book, it can be found on the amazon.com. So this is something that we really hope that people continue to read and be aware of what our history has brought us.
Thank you, Mr. Parks, thank you for your work. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Okay, very good. Mr. Sidil for an announcement, Mr. Sidil?
Members, yesterday was an important election, and it's indicative of transition that is constant in our life, and I just want to bring to the floor's attention that you all met my team when I came here on July 1st, a year and a half ago, and I'm losing my first member of my team, Chris Ortega, who's been here on the floor with me, where are you, Chris? Chris Ortega, right here, who's been on the floor with me since the first day we came in, as my assistant, getting me from point A to point B on time. He's leaving us now, marriage calls, and marriage calls wherever it does, and he's off to Arizona, he's a graduate of ASU, attended U of A, but he's back, headed back to Arizona so he can get married and start his family and start a new chapter in his life. But I'd like all of us to note that he was with us from the beginning, and what a great contribution he's made on the floor, as a very pleasant and friendly member of Team Sidil. Chris Ortega.
Chris, good job, Chris, good luck.
Say thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
That brings us to item thirty-four called Special for Cards.
Eric Previn. John Walsh? One minute, Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. This concerns Project Restore to use historic spaces at City Hall to honor these places. The number-one place we want is Jose Weza's office, and the reason it's historic is because he got his cock sucked by Francine.
Hey, hold on a second there, hold on. There's a man of the cloth just to the left of you, Mr. Walsh, you know? You tell Judge Ferguson that, too. Thank you. It's not a law, it's his decision. Please continue on the subject, John. No, no, I'm asking you to continue, Mr. Walsh.
It's a fact that he got his cock sucked and $40,000 job, and I want this office to be historic.
Sergeants, would you tell our guests to sit down?
And I want you to not clean up his semen stains.
Speak to the subject. Please note that the speaker is disruptive and out of control. Thank you, Sergeants. No speakers on the queue.
Oh my gosh.
It's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Fourteen eyes. Let's go to forty-four real quick. Mr. Clerk, call forty-four up special by Mr. Bonin.
Item forty-four called Special for Councilmember Bonin.
Thank you, colleagues, this is an item that was scheduled as a Rule 23, yes, today the number of folks had some questions about. It was a request from the LA Department of Transportation and from the CAO's office for us to take action before the council recess, in order to give the department authorization to move money from the salaries-as-needed account to their salaries-overtime account, in order to make sure that DOT employees will continue to get paid over the next couple weeks. And so, we've asked staff to come here and to report a little bit more on what the ask is, and why the timing got crunched for us, and there was a need for urgent action.
Thank you. Selwyn Holland, Assistant General Manager, Department of Transportation. First, I'd just like to apologize to the Council President and the distinguished members of council, that we have to come to you with this urgent need. The department has a huge demand on responding to overtime, and generally, we spend, per pay period, anywhere from $390,000 to upwards of over $600,000. Our current balance in our overtime account is $471,000. Because of the delay in council hearing the mid-year, we wanted to ensure that we have enough money to cover the overtime for this pay period that's ending this week. We were notified last week by the CAO that there may be a delay in this item coming before council through the mid-year, and so that prompted us to watch what our current, our last payroll was closing. We didn't receive payroll certification until last Friday, and so, once we found that out, and we found out what our last payroll was, we knew what the balance was in our account, and we needed to move. So, we wanted to make sure, we know this is a very challenging situation, but we are required by law to pay everyone, and we wanted to bring before this council with a sense of urgency.
So, I understand that you didn't get the final payroll accounting until last Friday, but you knew you were getting somewhat close, obviously. And CAO, there was an awareness that council was going on recess, and there would be a need to act sooner, so I think speaking for a number of my colleagues who were asking the question yesterday, why didn't we know about this sooner, and why wasn't this able to be agendized in the regular fashion?
Our office did reach, our office did reach out to all departments to ask them if they had any issues with payroll concerns, to let us know by Thursday. So unfortunately, as Mr. Holland said, he wasn't able to provide that information or be aware of that information, actually, until Friday, when all of his payroll information came in. So the timing of it was a little difficult to ascertain. So, we are asking for this transfer to bridge the gap, just in case if their overtime expenditures exceed $471,000, which is available.
The fact that you asked on that, on Thursday, is that something you routinely do before the council breaks for League of Cities or other conferences?
You know what, I can't speak to the FSR and the issues with scheduling it with council, that's not my area of expertise.
Okay, Selwyn, anything you want to add?
I would just say that, you know, I want to be clear that the, there are a lot of people who are working hard behind the scenes to try to manage this situation, and, you know, every now and then we misstep, but this is very important. We are obligated by federal law to ensure that everyone gets compensated. If we do not receive the transfer of funding, we will not be able to pay our employees, and that would be, you know, disastrous. So, we just would like, you know, to humbly ask that the council move forward with this, so that we can.
Yeah, nobody's questioning the need to make the transfer, I haven't heard anybody say that. Everybody was just concerned about the sort of jammed timing at the end, and so, just ask CAO and all the departments, not just DOT, you just happened to be in the hot seat today, to do a better job of anticipating when there may be a need for a payroll transfer, and when there may be a break in deliberations that would necessitate something happening sooner, just so we don't get caught up in the sort of last-minute situation.
Absolutely.
That looks frantic and makes it look like it's a problem when it's really a routine transfer.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Our colleagues asked for a vote.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin, thank you for your watchful eye on this department. Let's open the roll, one moment, please, I have two cards, Wayne from Encino, followed by Mr. Herman, yes?
Hearing on this was satisfied yesterday.
Was it satisfied?
We had a public hearing on this yesterday.
Mr. Clerk? All right, I'm listening to our city attorney members, one minute each, Wayne Spindler.
Yes, the microphone is back on. Yes, let's steal the $250,000 from the salaries account to give it to overtime. That way, we have $250,000 less to pay the regular wages. This is for overtime. Lay them off. You should give the $250,000 to CD-14, so they can continue with their projects there. This is wasted money. Now, you don't have to pay overtime, you just don't have to acquisition overtime. A 40-hour work week is a sustainable wage. Lay the people off that you can't afford to pay and rehire them on minimum. That's what Walmart does, they make billions of dollars, and you guys want to bankrupt the city over stupid stuff like this? Vote no.
Next is Mr. Herman, aka Mark Twain. One minute each.
Before the diapers came this motion to increase the overtime appropriation for the Los Angeles Department to meet the payroll obligations for a pay period of $250,000 to the Department of Transportation Fund, as needed, for salaries. This money could have been used, Mr. Labangbang, for the Special Olympics, to pay for the arrangements of the officers who will guide the Special Olympians, as I was in that meeting this morning, that didn't have a quorum. But staying on subject to my one minute, because now you decide to open up this item number forty-four, I find you offensive and disruptive when the city attorney has to correct you, moron.
Eric Previn? One minute, Mr. Previn.
Yes, it is, Eric Previn, city resident from Studio City, and Mr. Bonin suggested that this had been heard yesterday, it was introduced verbally by, I think, the chair, so there wasn't really an opportunity. Today, there is not really a good set of agendas that have this item on it, but nonetheless, we heard from the gentleman in the front here who get a nice full frame, and the point seems to be that there's a shortage of money, which is a big, big concern. Now, we do know that here at Los Angeles City, and item thirty-six is the mayor's budget coming up in May, you know, we are engaging with a lot of lobbying behavior, Xerox Solutions know me well, and we know one another, and, you know, they gouge this place with millions of dollars over a period of time, and it's really worrisome that they're able to do that, and yet here we find ourselves not able to get employees covered, and I think overtime needs to be reconsidered. I absolutely agree that we need to put a message to this department that it's not okay to miss a $250,000 calculation at all, and, you know, the job being done is...
Thank you, Mr. Previn. That completes your comment. No other speakers on the queue, the department's got the message, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Next item, please. Will be Special One. Has it been circulated, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir, it has, and I believe the city attorney will speak to the findings.
All right, Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. President, I recite the facts as presented to me by the maker of the motion for the council's consideration of the adequacy of the findings. Since the posting of today's agenda, the Municipal Facilities Committee has reported that the lease agreement with Louis Brisbois at 221 Figueroa must be extended. Immediate action is required before the council recess, inasmuch as the current lease is set to expire during the recess. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
All right, for a minute each, Mr. Walsh, please, followed by Mr. ... Let's vote on the findings, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes, one no.
On the findings, okay. Mr. Walsh, one minute.
Blogging, don't interrupt me, I know it's one minute, I've been coming here for thirty years. John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. We, first of all, you sneak these special items in, and there's no agendizing of them, it's very hard for us to find out what's happening. We have Mike Fewer, a city attorney here, he's a piece of legal garbage, and so is Dion. HollywoodHighlands.org, vote no on any special item. It means you can't find it on the internet, it hasn't been posted, it is a violation of open meetings law. Vote against anything. They just slip things in here, on the body of Ralph M. Brown, who died many years ago. He wants us to be able to find out everything about an agenda item before we get to vote. And you know what you can do with this agenda item? First fold it four ways, and maker of the motion should then receive it.
Wayne Spindler?
This is not the Weezer way. This is not the right way to do stuff. Sneaking in a lease? A goddamn lease? Where is it? I can't read it. Am I supposed to read it over here? I can't read it. What is it? This violates the Brown Act. This violates the city's charter. That's why charter reform was passed to stop this kind of stuff. You're running it in, people can barely get a speaker card in. Mr. Previn wants to speak. Now, this doesn't need to be urgent. We need to have notice of this so people can review these things. We have 15 council districts. Fourteen of them are going to be impacted negatively and one's going to benefit. This is for campaign donors. Vote no on these campaign donors' sneakiness. We don't need to be buying any more influence in City Hall. Thank you.
I have no other cards on this item. Could I have just staff at the center table just to explain why we're moving on this and back of the fire that took place on Figueroa? Staff, go ahead, please.
Hi, Jackie Wagner with the CAO's office. On December 8th, the city sustained significant damage to the 221 North Figueroa Plaza Towers. This was as a result of the Da Vinci complex fire. That tower is significantly damaged, and we've spent a lot of time since then doing a forensic analysis. Because of our uncertainty about the full extent of the damage, we previously came to the council and asked that the right to notify the law firm, as well as for the right for the law firm to notify us if they would return to the building after the repairs were done. Because of that period, we asked to extend that period of time. So now that we're pretty clear that there is not significant damage, significant structural damage, we are going to be asking to go forward with the repairs on the building. In the meantime, however, the law firm, out of necessity, had to secure temporary locations elsewhere. And as a result, they're asking for additional time to consider whether or not they'll be coming back to the building. And that's why we're asking for this additional extension. The MFC took action just last Thursday, and there hasn't been enough time to regularly schedule this item. However, if we do not approve this extension, their right to terminate or right to notify us later will extend on Sunday.
Thank you very much for that explanation so they know in recovery and all the work that everyone's doing, the CAO, General Service. Mr. City Attorney?
And the MFC report was just issued within the last couple of days.
It was just issued on Monday. I received logged on Tuesday by the city clerk.
What's the MFC report for those who are watching and they don't know what that means?
Municipal Facilities Committee.
Very good. And also check with the county. The county's moving out too. Their DA's moving into the hall of...
That was a scheduled move from the 201 Tower.
Got it. But just so we're on top of everything. Thank you so much. No speakers on the queue? Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, next item.
Mr. President, that brings us to item 36, called special for cards. So this is the mayor's budget item? Is that correct? I'm confused. Yes, okay, thank you. Well, I look forward to the mayor's budget on May 20th. I'm very disappointed in special item number one, which the protocol here is outrageous, guys. You got to fix that, okay? It's not okay to just add something for Louis Brisbois, Bizgarden, Smith at the last minute. Whether it's good, bad, or otherwise, last-minute-y stuff raises the hackles of the public's curiosity. So anyway, the mayor's budget is very important, and the biggest issue, I think, because so many people are concerned about the failure to cover all the costs, and because the public and the residents are concerned about land use issues that are out of control, nobody wants to hear about six-story density bonuses in their neighborhood, and people are very concerned about the Harvard-Westlake Bridge over Coldwater. And now we have a legal panel, and I asked the mayor, it's coming to him, it's a legal panel that's intended to...
Please speak to the issue.
What do you mean? Am I not on the issue? The mayor's budget?
I'm not.
How is it, this is a big, huge financial... Let me, Mike Fuhr is in the room. He'll tell you that the lawsuits against the city for land use were out of control. That's why Mr. Krikorian and Mr. McWilliams had to put together this kooky scheme-
He is not on the topic.
Thank you very much. The next speaker will be Mr. Herman. Mr. Herman still in the room?
This item motion by Krikorian and Mr. Wesson for a proposed budget for 2015. It'd be nice if Mr. Krikorian can turn around and give us the actual figure amount of the budget, but as you may all read and understand, Mr. Bloomfield, that the proposal for the 2015-16 budget for the city on Wednesday, May 20th, 2015, at 10:00 a.m. in the John Foraro Council Chambers was never discussed, as far as I'm concerned. Incidentally, yesterday, during a special item number one regarding a budget with transportation... Quote me if I'm wrong, Mr. Krikorian. You said there was a budget. And in question to all you politicians, was there ever a budget for transportation? Why do we have to get involved with LA County, county supervisors to issue a surrender of transparency to know whether or not the city of Los Angeles actually effectuates transparency to a budget?
Speaker, complete your comments.
Now...
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I say to you, this is all F'ed up because there's not even a dollar amount for the budget. Thank you.
That was the last speaker on this item. No speakers on the queue? Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Mr. City Clerk, next items.
Mr. President, that brings counsel to items 41 through 43. They're items scheduled for closed session.
Mr. Krikorian, could you give us some guidance as chairman of the Finance Committee?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. President. Item 41 and item 43 are both routine matters that were considered by the Budget and Finance Committee and can be voted on in open session. Budget and Finance supports the recommendation of the city attorney. Item 42 is a matter that we'll need to consider in closed session.
Yes, okay, let's do 41. Mr., excuse me? Is there any questions on these items? 41 and 43? Let's open the roll.
Mr. President, I first need to, for item 41, in the case entitled Azar Mipour versus City of Los Angeles, there's a recommendation to expend $240,000 in settlement. And for item 43, in the case entitled Caesar Mata versus City of Los Angeles and Roberto Alanis et al. versus City of Los Angeles, there's a recommendation to adopt the recommendation of the city attorney.
Thank you. So let's vote on those items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thirteen ayes. Sergeants, on item 42, Mr. City Attorney, we want to go in closed session. Will you make the announcements?
Actually, Mr. President, before we do, if I may, I just wanted to make a brief announcement, if that's in order.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, as you know, I have the privilege of serving on the MTA Board and the MetroLink Board and chairing the San Fernando Valley Council of Governments. And in all of those roles, I am able to serve only because of the extraordinary work that's been performed by my staff member, Daniel Lopez, who's here with us, who also staffs me on the Transportation Committee and has been part of my policy team since I walked in the door here. He was actually instrumental in giving me the opportunity even to serve here as a key member of my campaign team as well. And I'm both proud and also personally sorry to have to say that Daniel is going to be leaving us at the end of this week. This is his last council day. He's going to be, he's one of the first hires of the Kamala Harris for United States Senate campaign, and so he's going to be doing statewide work for the benefit of Ms. Harris and her campaign for the Senate. And I just wanted to thank Daniel publicly for all of the extraordinary service he's given to the people of Council District Two and the city of Los Angeles, and indeed our entire region. So, Daniel, thank you and congratulations.
Thank you, Daniel. Congratulations. And now, Mr. City Attorney, we're going to go in closed session. So sergeants, would you ask, if we go in closed session, city attorneys, will you stay? If these are your items?
Actually, this is a CAO Conflict Council item. I will excuse myself.
You do. And you do right away there, Mr. City Attorney. You do. And you do right away there, Mr. City Attorney. Wait, well, Mr. Clerk. Hold on, Brian, for a second. I gotta correct it by the clerk. You're on the phone. I'm okay, Mr. City Attorney. We're good. All right, Mr. Clerk.
Yes, sir. For item 42, the closed session matter in the case entitled Obie Stephen Anthony versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expand $8.3 million in settlement.
So let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thirteen ayes. So ordered. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, that takes us to general public comment.
Brian Barajas?
Okay, well, if anybody has been actually looking at any sorts of reports that are coming out of Putin murdering someone, I can tell you that that is a lie. But the reason why I bring that up for you guys is because, as I warned before, if we're gonna keep this country as a republic, and I do emphasize a republic since that is guaranteed under our federal constitution, it's not a democracy, we're gonna have to really discuss the matter of ending global thermonuclear World War III. The reason that the president comes out that Putin is the murderer is because you have to understand, when a murderer says another person is a murderer, you have to understand that this President Obama is a murderer in chief. As he so said so himself, he loves murdering people, in his own words. He needs to go.
Daniel Gus?
Well, congratulations, guys. You kicked ass last night, every one of you. It doesn't mean that we're wrong. It just means that you failed to inspire 92% of the Angelenos to get involved and vote. 92% of the people you represent didn't vote. Kudos to Herb Wesson. He saved Jose Weezer's career. He passed Amendment 1 and 2. He kept everybody from losing. He won his own campaign easily. He ran the city, and Herb Wesson actually got me to like him. He's a winner. Herb should go on Survivor, because he would win. I hope he runs for mayor next, not supervisor, because we need him to progress up to governor. He is phenomenal. Congratulations, guys. You won, and we didn't, but just for yesterday. Mr. Blumenfeld, I hope will take this article about Jim Bickhardt threatening homeless people in Venice. You gave him a contract yesterday. I'd like you to at least read this to see what Jim Bickhardt did, and he was suspended from the mayor's office.
Wayne from Encino?
We did it. We retired the Jabba the Hutt Gloria Molina. At last, she's gone. And to quote her last night, I don't speak her language very well. She said something like, "Huh, like that," and I couldn't figure out what it was. But now, the snacks back in the condiment section behind the door there will now be available. Paul Corretts can now eat as much as he wants, because Gloria Molina will not be there. Finally, we get to the shooting and the murder of the man called Africa. The name that was given to him is not his name. We still don't know his name. And then, if he's an immigrant and not a citizen convicted of an aggravated felony, why was he released by ICE? Let's find out about that.
Sean Murphy, next speaker.
Good afternoon, Tom. Congratulations to my councilman. I'm gonna go have a drink in a few minutes to celebrate. I'd like to thank all my fans out in L.A. for listening to me. I'd like to thank District 2 for listening to me. I was right. I predicted this. I really, really predicted this. Vote for Carolyn Ramsey, May 19th. She'll be the next councilwoman for CD4, and I am getting ready for the Siglivia Bike Ride. And can you let Monsignor know? Getting ready to ride a Siglivia Bike Ride in the valley. So pass the word on to Monsignor Gallagher. Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Kukorian.
Henry Marine? Henry's not here. Note his card. Jennifer Smith?
Hi. My name's Jennifer Smith. I live in Echo Park, and I wanted to talk to you about why home sharing is so important to me. Sorry, this is sort of exciting. I'm nervous. So I have a family, and I have a job, and I own a house, and I rent out part of my house to people from all over the world. And they get to not only see Echo Park and the best parts of L.A., but I get to see the best parts of them. And it's very special for me and my family to be able to spend more time together and to be able to save for my kids' college education and to take vacations every once in a while and to use the money to repair our house when things come up and we're unaware of it. So I just wanted to bring it to your guys' attention that I'm the face of an Airbnb hostess, and thank you so much.
Henry, excuse me. Jess Martinez, is that correct? Yes? On Cummins Street, 90033? Note the card. Eric Preben?
Good morning, Council President Labange. And is Council President Wesson here today? Or is he moved on? No worries. Okay, so I'm not gonna pursue a recount. Mr. Kukorian won the election fair and square, if you can call it that. However, I am gonna pursue my Public Record Act request for the law firms that are involved in 141606, that item. And frankly, that was filed on February 4th. There has been no response by Vivian Swannigan or Mike Fuer, who are responsible to fulfill those requests to see the legal invoices from the firms that we're dealing with. So I'd like that taken care of forthwith. Regarding the Brown Act violation in the agendizing of this firm, Mr. O'Connell obviously has a lot on his plate and is a little overwhelmed. So I would ask that we get one of these panel firms to take a quick look. And I will say this, that I think that this council shall all raise their voice individually. We should put a motion together and see if, in fact, everybody agrees that the public should be reduced in size, because I think that individuals among this group would not vote to continue to slap the public across the face.
John Walsh?
John Walsh, J. Walsh Confidential. Mr. City Attorney, everything I said previously about Mr. Weezer and because he's sucking the... He got his cocksucked at his office, that we should make this a historical site, is covered and protected by the federal ruling of Judge Pregerson. And if you're gonna say the opposite, we will go to court, because I'm a Jew, and Jews love to sue. So please stop the alcoholic chairman of this committee, who is, in his drunken stupor, is trying to stop me. I'm telling you right now, it's an historic spot in this city where Francine Godoy got down on her knees and the mayor shoved his dick.
I think you're out of line, Mr. Walsh. You're Mr. Out of Line. You're out of line. You're out of line. I'm out of line with the... Thank you very much, Mr. Walsh. I know. I'm running the meeting. You continue. Thank you so much. Mr. Herman is the next speaker.
Don't threaten me. Just get out of the way. Ask the sergeant of our Mr. Duarte just to get the hell out of my way and stop interrupting my participation in this meeting, goddammit. Sick of that shit. When you're drunk in Los Angeles, it is the most offensive way to kill a disabled person on the streets of Los Angeles. Africa did not deserve the racial tactics of the LAPD and all of you who did not stand up on his behalf, meaning you, Mark Riley. And in my hand is the symbol of someone's life that don't mean a goddamn thing to you. And that's why I have to speak offensively in regards to myself, the nigger who's listening to all of you, because that's what I've become to you. A nigger, yes. Federal ruling.
Next speaker, Mr. Pearson. Paul Pearson.
Thank you, City Council. Forgive me a minute to speak. There's a situation going on right now I need to make everybody aware of. I'm in Council District 6, but this affects all council districts. Across the street, LADOT processes applications from EMTs, ambulance drivers, taxicabs. Their budgets have been severely cut, that basically they're processing these applications. I have people coming in from Lancaster to get permits that take two and three days, and I have proof of this. I've organized the ambulance companies. Right now, there's a budget cut issue, and the bottom line is, they used to have three employees processing applications, and now there's only one, which is a supervisor. I understand that these three employees have retired and have not been replaced. What this will do in the meantime will effectively decrease the number of ambulances out here serving the citizens of Los Angeles. I would like to get this on as an agenda item to discuss in a future time, but you are gonna be losing ambulance services.
Thank you very much. That completes your comment. No other cards here? Mr. Clerk, what's before us?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
So ordered.
The desk is clear.
Any announcement, members? Mr. Parks?
Technology. Colleagues, just to remind you that when Mr. Siegel was here last week in Honored, he extended that citywide, countywide campaign to where he's allowing the first vehicle with 2,000 pounds or one ton of trash or green waste to be dumped for free. This program extends to March the 6th. It was a seven-day program this time. The last time he did it for 60-some-odd days. The hours are 5:30 a.m. to 7:30 p.m., seven days a week. He will accept all trash, green waste, except liquids. And so we ask that people take advantage of it, active recycling, at 2,000 West Slauson Avenue. That's three blocks west of Western Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parks, and thank you for that businessman, for that effort there. For Mr. Sadiya, big race this weekend up at Dodger Stadium, Susan B. Coleman. So check that out. It'll be good this Saturday for everybody. Now I'm gonna call on adjourned motions. Please all rise for adjourned motions. Mr. O'Farrell, please, from the center, microphone.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Sadly, we are here to adjourn council in the memory of the Reverend Malcolm Boyd. Standing with me is his partner of thirty-one years, Mark Thompson, and of course, the Reverend John Bruno, Bishop, uh... Deacon of the Episcopal Diocese of Los Angeles. Born in Buffalo, New York, on June eighth, nineteen twenty-three, to Melville and Beatrice Lowry Boyd. His father was a New York investment banker and his mother a fashion model. He graduated from East Denver High School in nineteen forty and the University of Arizona in nineteen forty-four. In nineteen forty-six, he joined Republic Pictures as a publicist, then became a producer. He and the film stars Mary Pickford and her husband Buddy Rogers formed a television production company in nineteen forty-nine. His friends included Elizabeth Taylor, Gloria Swanson, Edgar Bergen. You might have heard a few of those individuals. He became the first president of Hollywood's Television Producers Association. Despite his success, Mr. Boyd felt that life had become meaningless. In nineteen fifty-one, he quit Hollywood to study for the Episcopal ministry. He earned a bachelor's degree from the Church Divinity School of the Pacific in Berkeley in nineteen fifty-four. He traveled and studied in England and Switzerland, was ordained finally in Los Angeles in nineteen fifty-five, and received a master's degree from Union Theological Seminary in New York in nineteen fifty-six. As a social activist, he took his ministry into coffeehouses and nightclubs. In nineteen sixty-six, he appeared for a month at San Francisco's Hungry Eye Club with comedian Dick Gregory, donating his one thousand dollar a week salary to a civil rights group. Wearing his clerical collar accompanied by a jazz guitar or a blues horn, he recited Talking With God prayers from his nineteen sixty-five bestselling book, Are You Running With Me, Jesus? Convinced that Christian churches, including his own, had become isolated from ordinary people in an era of sexual revolution and social turmoil, Father Boyd became a chaplain-at-large for an alienated, under-thirties generation. In the late nineteen sixties, he turned up at hundreds of college campuses and union halls, at sit-ins, demonstrations, anti-war rallies, often submitting to arrest with other protesters. He also wrote voluminously, plays that challenged assumptions about race, newspaper and magazine commentaries on everything from politics to global affairs to traffic jams, and more than two dozen books that explored human rights, religion, sexuality, and other subjects, and detractors, including many church leaders called his work trite. Others called it witty, provocative, and entertaining. Reverend Boyd took his boldest step in nineteen seventy-six, when he announced his homosexuality at an Episcopal convention in Chicago. For several years afterward, he was turned down for staff positions at Episcopal churches. Reverend Frederick Fenton, I'm sorry, Frederick Fenton, rector of St. Augustine by the Sea in Santa Monica and a longtime friend, invited Boyd to join his staff in nineteen eighty-two. He is quoted as saying, "We lost some members, but those who stayed loved Malcolm dearly. He was incredibly creative, compassionate, funny. He burned at the ridiculing of any person. Like a human chameleon, he absorbed hurt feelings and then showed the rest of us what it was like." While he was based at St. Augustine, Boyd is elected president of PEN, an advocacy group for writers' freedom of speech. It was there where he met Mark Thompson. Mark was a senior editor for The Advocate, a national gay and lesbian newspaper. In two thousand and four, on the twentieth anniversary of their domestic partnership, their union was blessed by the Episcopal bishop of Los Angeles, John Bruno. In a ceremony at the Cathedral Center of St. Paul in Los Angeles, Boyd and Thompson, who made their home in Silverlake, married in July twenty thirteen after Proposition Eight was overturned and same-sex unions resumed in California. In his later years, Boyd was writer-in-residence at the Cathedral Center of St. Paul. He also worked as a chaplain for AIDS patients and helped to establish a gay history archive at University of Southern California, the One Archives. Reverend Malcolm Boyd passed away on Friday, February twenty-seventh, under hospice care from complications of pneumonia at the age of ninety-one. A celebration of Reverend Boyd's life will be held at two p.m. on Saturday, March twenty-first, at the Cathedral Center of St. Paul in Echo Park. Reverend Malcolm Boyd was an author, activist, counterculture rebel, and an incredible person who lived ninety-one years and just heard about the sweep of history that he experienced. May he rest in peace. And I'd like to invite Reverend Boyd to just say a few brief words as well. I'm sorry, Bruno.
That's okay.
I've got Boyd on the brain.
I'll always talk on behalf of Malcolm. I'm a sixty-eight-year-old man who was one of the young eighteen-year-olds that met this man in his chaplaincy to everybody. He taught me to respect the dignity of every human being, to work for justice and mercy in this world. When my parents were teaching me how to walk precincts in this town and this city, he was taking me to be active in demonstrations and Selma and those places. And it's important that we have people like this who hold us accountable. When we discriminate on the basis of anything difference of opinion, as I've heard you discriminated against in this room, when we discriminate because of race or because of faith, we do harm to our God. I was taught that by Malcolm. He's worked for me the last fifteen years as the bishop of Los Angeles, and I have never in my life found a man of greater dignity, power, and grace. Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. We shall remember him. Mr. Parks?
Our vice, we request that we adjourn in memory of Donald Gene Roberts, who passed away February twenty-seventh, two thousand and fifteen. Donald was the fourth of ten children, born to his parents, Oscar and Marie Roberts, in Houston, Texas. He received his education in Houston School District. At age seventeen, he moved to Los Angeles, where he began to build a new life. His family knew him as a family man, a friend, and a very humble person. In nineteen ninety-four, he met his future wife Renee, and they were married in two thousand and three. Together, they had two children, two daughters, which they dedicated their life to service of the community. Don realized that many of our children in our society faced challenges and controversies and lacked basic skills for employment, along with his associate Joe Ellis, under the program Fathers and Mothers Who Care Incorporated. They started teaching young people how to restore, repair, and paint automobiles in South Los Angeles. Once again, always in the background, never seeking recognition. He had an exceptional talent as an architect, designing and refurbishing various properties, giving meticulous attention to detail, possessing extraordinary skills in building. He worked untirelessly to help people who were considered less fortunate in our society. Don was passionate, served a developmental disabled community for over seventeen years, working behind the scenes, supporting his wife's every endeavor. He expanded his construction field in nineteen ninety-seven, remodeling the family's first residential care facility, and continued to be hands-on with each new project. He is truly a man of great concern and compassion. He leaves his wife Renee and his two daughters and a host of family members. His funeral services will be held Saturday, March the seventh, at ten-thirty a.m. at Angeles Funeral Home, thirty-eight seventy-five Crenshaw Boulevard.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Members, I ask we adjourn in memory of Helen Lernerhand. At one time, my family, all my brothers and cousins, we had like twenty-nine aunts and uncles. Now we're down to one, but Helen's up in heaven now. She's preceded in death by her husband Bernard, my uncle, and her son Kevin, survived by her daughter Connie. I lived with them years ago when my mother was sick in nineteen sixty-one, and Helen made the best grilled cheese anybody in the whole world. She's a wonderful person. She's reunited with her family. May she rest in peace. A proud graduate of L.A. High, Helen Lernerhand. Seeing no other members today. Let's go ahead and serve the city well. Thank you, our clerks. We're on recess for the League of Cities. Thanks, staff, our sergeants, and especially the folks who do the sound and Channel Thirty-five. Over and out.